The city of Apache Junction, work session to order. Roll call.
Mayor Surti.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Barker.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
Councilmember Struble.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Update and discussion on the Munis financial software system.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Anna McCray, Assistant to the City Manager. I'm excited to be here this evening to share with you the great news that we are live on our new Munis financial software system as of July 1st, the beginning of this fiscal year. We actually opened up this fiscal year a little bit early due to some new processes staff is working through, which include requisition for purchase orders for any single items or single purchases for over $5,000. City staff has trained over the last five-plus weeks in learning all of the different processes involved with this new system. As you may recall, we entered into an agreement with Tyler Technologies in December, or excuse me, in August of 2018. We had a anticipated go-live of November 2019, but because of some intricacies in rebuilding our whole chart of accounts, which is truly the crux of the financial system, as well as some obstacles we found in going mid-year with the new financial system, it made better sense to hold off and go at the start of our new fiscal year, which we done. So we were successful with that, we're excited, we're on our way. We did a First Amendment of December 2019 to simply reallocate some unused dollars that were set aside in that original agreement for data conversion that we ended up not doing. We didn't bring any history from the old system into the new, and we converted that for some additional implementation consultant hours. That was done administratively, so we did not have to come back before you for permission to do that. So tonight, we bring forth a Second Amendment to that contract. This would allow for additional Munis modules to be under the umbrella of that system to truly build a enterprise resource planning system. The financials was the first phase, and now we are looking to add on additional phases of human resources, payroll with employee self-service, employee expense reimbursement, vendor self-service, bids and contracts. This is a one-time implementation fee of $82,740 in annual SaaS fees, software as a service. It's hosted in the cloud as a remote service that provides us with redundancy and security of $20,680 per year. There are some travel costs built in, but with the times, we anticipate most of our sessions to onboard the HR payroll and those other modules. There will be very little travel, and a lot of it will be done remotely instead. We have a lofty goal of getting HR and payroll up and running by January 1st, as that makes sense for the timing of all the 1099s and W2s and all that are based on a calendar year rather than a fiscal year. So you will see this on your consent agenda tomorrow, and I'm open for questions.
Are there any questions? Robin.
Okay, you have a $21,000, no, a $20,000 Phase 2 annual maintenance cost, right?
Correct.
Is there a Phase 1 annual maintenance cost also?
There is. We are paying about $44,000 annually for SaaS fees for the financials. In comparison, for Kronos right now, we pay about $34,000. But again, that's just for HR payroll. There's other associated fees with the current AS400 system that we still have data in the cloud for all our historical data, as well as utility billing continues to use that system. So as we transition that historical data into a searchable database, we'll start to pare that down. As well as when we transition HR and payroll away from Kronos, we'll start to see those fees reduce as well.
Okay, but at this point in time, we have about $60,000 annual between the two.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Did you say we didn't, we didn't transfer over the old data?
We did not convert any old data. With the rebuild of the entire chart of accounts, it was difficult to crosswalk a lot of that and decided, let's leave the old data in the old system where it's still searchable. But we didn't want to bring any, and I hesitate to use the word garbage, but we didn't want to bring any kind of data that could be skewed into the new system.
So how, are we going to get comparative reports at all, or?
You will still get your comparative reports, and we are setting that up as soon as we get some activity. You can expect to see your monthly year-to-date budget and historical reports to start after this first quarter of this fiscal year, so likely in October at that second meeting. You will see a report on the first quarter, and then every month after that, at the second set of meetings, you should see monthly reports moving forward.
But are they going to be comparative with old data, or?
You will see, it won't be apples-to-apples, because again, the chart of accounts is different. But yeah, you will be able to see historical revenue.
Revenue.
Correct.
And total expenses.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just think it's interesting, the different, the new things that you'll be able to do on this program.
Yeah, we'll anticipate to see some cost savings there as well. The contracts module that Public Works has right now is about $7,000 a year civic HR, which again, this new Munis module of HR will take the place of eventually. That's about another $6,500 a year. So as we, again, we start to phase out those other separate software and get it all under the umbrella of this Munis ERP system, we should see more cost savings. But yeah, transitioning a lot more to electronic and a lot more transparency to you, as well as the public and our city staff.
More efficient.
Correct. We're already reducing duplicative processes, paper, a lot of that, so.
Freeing up a lot of staff time.
Absolutely.
As well. And so we'll be able to get things that we haven't been able to historically. So it's really, really beneficial. Over time, we will see cost savings on the annual maintenance fees, as Anna explained.
Okay, if that's everything, we will move on.
Thank you.
Discussion and update on the qualified use of pandemic-related expenditure. So this is the CARES, not the PPP. And who should kick this off?
Matt?
I will, yeah. Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and City Councilmembers, Matt Busby, Assistant City Manager. This is our third presentation about the AZ CARES funding. We'll just do a quick review. We'll try to go through, there's a lot of slides, but I think we can get them through pretty quickly, so you can get to your discussion at hand. So as you recall, the allocation towards Apache Junction was $4.8 million. This is based, as we requested the funding, the grants from the state government, it was based on our reimbursement of our public safety costs. So that's what fulfilled the requirement of the CARES Act, the Federal CARES Act. As you recall, the large cities and towns over 500,000 in the state got direct funding. The rest of the CARES Act funding went directly to the state. And the state came up with this distribution method. And I'm happy to report that we did submit it last week. We found out late last week that it was awarded, but we still don't have the funds actually in our coffers yet. So I just submitted the acceptance letter today, and it should be distributed over the next week or two. We should have that in our funds, that $4.8 million. Further review, as we've discussed the last two meetings, we wanted to discourage thinking of these funds as a blank check. They were really based on costs that we know are coming, and that's how the distribution was, came to us. So we recommend taking a slow and cautious fiscal approach as we know that we're going into some big headwinds financially as the effects of the downturn in the economy because of the COVID-19 pandemic. We recommend taking a very cautious approach, and that's why we're spreading this out over many meetings to give you as much data as we can, so you can make what you feel are wise decisions and about how you want to approach these funds. Many cities and towns, as we asked around, as we continue to research, are delaying any action or even discussion until August. But many of you have probably seen many discussed in the newspaper already, particularly those who got direct funding, how their programs are already going. They're under an obligation to spend it before December 30th, 2020. Because of the setup the state government did, we're now, under no such obligation. So we have time, like that. But you'll see something like Pinell County. I believe Maricopa will review some of those tonight and what they've done. So there are those that are acting on it right now as well. In our research, in what other cities and towns and counties are doing, we recognize that as much as 50% or more of the funding is often set aside as reserves because the cities and towns know this is going to be a tough year. We already know from the state government and our budget discussions we shared with you that their estimates dropped almost $900,000. It was $800 and some thousand dollars of revenue that would come to the city. And so we know that we had to pare down the budget, and we know that's just an estimate. So we don't truly know what our revenues would be like until after the winter season. And we see how many winter visitors come back, how much money they spend, you know, how bad the recession is and how quick the recovery is.
So Matt, you prefer to have questions at the end?
Whatever, it's, it's your preference.
Because there's a big kind of an elephant in the room lately with what you just said about the city. And we are all getting up here asked about, if things are this bad about the employee raises that we're going to be giving. A lot of people, it feels to them like we're taking this money and giving employee raises. Can you explain how those raises would be happening? And it's a very small raise, but can you, let's get that out in the air right now.
Sure. So our city class and compensation plan, which the City Council just adopted at the last set of meetings, is based on a step system for employees, and it's based on a 2.5% step each year. Some cities have a difference set up to where it's not just an automatic step, but it's based on, what's the term? Merit, merit raises. We chose to do step raises. We've done merit raises here in the past, and you've heard Bryant and others explain the pros and cons of each way of doing things. So we've, when we went to this 2.5%, this new class and compensation study and setup, it, the 2.5%, like the mayor said, is kind of small. It used to be 4.3%, and we never gave step increases. And that created some severe issues with what's referred to in that world as compression among particularly our largest employee title, which is police officer. We have 50 or 60 in that title alone. And so the goal of going to just a 2.5% was to keep that movement so we could keep up, or at least try to keep up with other cities, other industries, keep up with the marketplace. And it's, we've been able to do that for the past, I don't know, five years or so. I think we've done step increases. So as this funding came out, it gave us a little more confidence to continue that because as we were going into the budget recommendation for the City Council, there was some trepidation about doing that, some concerns because of the economy. But this loosened it up, we could continue that, particular for our public safety and police officers who, and really all our employees that have been here working. But particularly our police officers have been out in this stuff with the residents, with those, you know, in the combat zone, so to speak. And so we felt really important that we continue this to at least give them something to show that we're continuing to support them, public safety and all city employees, as they provide these vital and essential services that we want to maintain.
To add to the discussion there, there are some industries that have given extra pay during this. I think some hospital workers have gotten extra pay. But the optics are that some people aren't working at all, you know. So that's where, and so, yeah.
So what is that dollar amount? The 2.5 isn't necessarily very much paycheck to pay per, you know, per individual. What does that look like in total?
In total, I believe it was almost $700,000, is $650,000, to give all employees a 2.5% step. Yeah.
And so, I'll ask my question later. I'll put that in the next question.
Is this something anyone would like to bring up later or now? Or are we, okay.
All right, yeah, go ahead, Matt.
All right. So this is the first thing that we really noticed, many cities and towns, about 50% or even sometimes more, they're setting aside now for reserves because there's these unknown costs coming ahead. The second thing we noticed, about 25% or more are set aside for known or unknown city operational needs to maintain vital services, particular public safety, emergency operations. These change in what we're doing, you'll see a lot of these sneeze guards set up on our front counters. There's costs to all this, providing all the necessary cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer, to keep our employees and the public safe. Our doors are open right now, so we want to create an environment where they're safe. So a lot of these needs, they cost, and we don't know what's coming up in the future. As in Arizona, we know the cases, and the hospitalizations are going up. It's not going away. So that's another thing that, this is kind of a general category that cities said, we're going to set aside an amount, 25% or more for these types of things. And then the third thing, and this is what I think you all want to spend a lot of time talking about, is this community investment idea. Business assistance, utility assistance for residents and businesses, nonprofit assistance, all these other things. We've noticed about 15% to 20% of this AZ CARES funding is often the order of magnitude or the percentage that they put aside to fund these types of programs. There, oh, this is just a slide that case for reserves. I mentioned some of this, I won't go through each one, but it's just the importance of maintaining the vital services, particularly our public safety and many of the services that our residents want and continue to use even right now. And so I won't go through each one of those, but they're available in the presentation. Examples of some of the city operational needs, particularly in public safety. This first one, dispatch remodel. This, of course, you probably remember, it is included in the budget. But it just, these funds give us that breathing room, that elbow room to be confident that we can do this project right. Perhaps these other funds, the $125,000, could not be used, and the AZ CARES funds could be. Or we expand on that project. Those are just some options. Radios at the end of life, these are very high costs. This is our 800 megahertz system for the police radios, $8,000 per radio. And I think we funded three in the budget this year. And we know that Motorola will stop supporting them. And we have 30 handhelds and 30 car units. And so at $8,000 apiece, that adds up. So we add what we can in the budget, but this funding could go towards a lot of those need replacements because Motorola won't be servicing them anymore. So we're going to have to spend the money at some point.
Do we have enough cameras for each officer? I know that there was a choice, wasn't there a choice or something for the officers? They didn't have to wear them. Do we have enough cameras now that?
You're talking body cameras?
Wear one?
Yeah, so these radios are different than body cameras.
Yeah.
So these don't address that, but I could let Chief address what the body cameras. We don't have every officer wearing them right now, I don't believe, but.
That was just in addition to the radios. I know it wasn't part of the radio.
Yeah.
It was.
You'll see a lot of that discussion in Phoenix and Mesa and starting to require all those. And many police departments just requiring every officer to do that.
Where are we with that?
Chief, do you want to address how many cameras we have? And what the plan is? The most expensive part isn't the cameras, but the maintenance of the software.
Do they still have a choice?
Maintenance of the storage.
Choice to wear them?
No, we don't give them a choice, they're assigned. What they are, we have 20 body cameras that are input on certain officers that have more potential to come into a situation where the cameras would be needed, like street crimes officers or traffic officers and the officers that are in high activities. We currently have 20, which is about just a little less than half the officers that are required to carry them. And as was stated, the cameras are cheap, they're about $300 or $400 bucks apiece. However, the storage for each one of those is $1,000 a year each. So that's 20, I'm paying about $25,000 just for storage. And then I have to figure out for redaction and evidence and copying for the Pinell County Attorney's Office and for court copies of the public. So we're talking about hiring more personnel to do those redactions and everything else, which all public records are required by the state without any funding backing up to add another, you know, personnel or two to do all that extra stuff. So I'm kind of fighting the idea of going further any more than 20 of what we have. If we add more personnel to the street crimes unit or another unit, then I would look at it. But right now, I think we're sufficient for what we need. Our complaints from the public in regards to any internal things are extremely low. And when we do have them, the body cameras back up, what the officers are telling us.
And Chief, just a follow-up question. The $1,000 a year for the maintenance of the storage, is that in perpetuity? Is there a life of the records that we have to maintain them?
The records stay in pretty much forever, but I mean, every time we store per camera, it's $1,000 per camera for storage right now. And like everything else, it keeps going up and up. And then they change the programs and add stuff. But this is part of the technology crisis we go through. Every time you talk about a program, it's $10,000 for this, $25,000 for that. And then we come to the budgets, it's always trying to get. We originally got the cameras on a grant. The grant paid for the first year, and we've been paying ever since then. We've had it for about five or six years now, but it keeps going up. So we're paying, like I said, about $25,000 to $30,000 a year just for storage.
And so it's not just a matter of saving incidents, it's a matter of you have to save, if you're recording, you have to save the whole, all of it for a certain period of time, like any records?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is a period of time where some of it can be disposed of, but then we have to go through the court to get a disposition on, make sure the court case is over with and any litigation that might be on it. So we'll have to do those things on a regular basis. But again, that goes through the property evidence person, which we currently have one and a half that does that. So they do all that, and the property evidence room right now is containing probably between $25,000 to $30,000 pieces of evidence per year. So it's a little bit of an overload.
Certainly among the options you have to consider as you look at these fundings. But there is some costs that go on, not just the upfront costs, so.
Or to increase staff if they.
Yeah, exactly.
I've got a question for the Chief. Now, just to maybe refresh my memory. Now, the city of Gilbert, didn't they work out a deal, they use our firing range, they gave us some radios?
No, they gave us tasers.
Tasers.
They were the tasers they were surplusing because they got the more modern ones. We're using the, let's go back to World War I. We got the World War I version, they got the nuclear side. Yeah.
Okay.
We have done radios.
And we're usually using those for maintenance on the ones that we have, where we have parts that can be replaced or the batteries that can be used that weren't utilized. So we're piecing those out to maintain the tasers that we're currently using. And those are, they come very pricey as well.
And then we've done that with the radios where we get hand-me-down, so to speak, from Mace or someone else. But the issue with Motorola is they're stopping any support on these models. So there'll be a point where we just can't.
These radios we have right now is the end of life. They don't even have any parts for them anymore. So once they're gone, they're gone. We have continued to try to get grants to fund some of them, but because of the price and grants are down low, and most of the grants we're going through are through the shares, through the Indian reservations that they grant money through the casinos and profits out of there. So we try to ask them for a small amount each year. And when we do that, we get maybe two or three, or we don't get them at all. So we keep asking for those. But those are the handheld walkie-talkie radios that the guys would have when they're out in the field, and then along with the hard-mounted radio that is installed in the vehicle, which you have to have both of them, can't just take one or the other. And they're both gone, and it ranges between $8,000 and $10,000 plus the installation. I'd mean yours.
Thank you.
Another operational need we've had in the budget, or we anticipated in each budget over the past several years of funding a commander-level position in investigations, we usually back that out. It's a high-paying position and a needed position, but typically, our budget hasn't allowed it. So that's something that we could do now that we have some flexibility as well. A big one is this comps grant that we're so excited to have received. It covers about $1 million for eight officers over the life of three years. We have to fund the fourth year. So our total city match required over that timeframe is $1.8 million. We are, if we haven't accepted the grant already, we will be soon. Chief, have we sent our acceptance in to the?
Officially, we haven't accepted it. I'm still working with finance and the final approval for me to hit the electric button and say yes. I'm waiting for.
Okay, great. So that's a, that's a large cost that some of this funding could be utilized for city operations. Other equipment, we have other lists that sometimes we wait on in the budget, lots of different options, so. And also, as more and more city employees, officers become ill or tested positive for COVID-19, there are certain quarantine requirements. Overtime is likely to go up, so we know that, that's another budget hit. There's some other emergency management things that this would provide us flexibility to do. A city generator that we've been working on to ensure our maintenance of and continuity of operations and communication channels. And then for our emergency operations centers, some old computers that we can replace as well. Now, before I invite Janine up to go through some of the things that we've learned about the different business assistance programs, there has been this question that I allude to in the past couple meetings about this issue of the gift clause concern. So Joel helped me put together a couple slides, hopefully you were able to go through them, about what the gift clause is in the Arizona Constitution and why there's a concern. But we know there's programs that people are feeling comfortable enough from their own legal counsel to move forward with. So I wanted to add these just for your benefit. I don't want to spend too much time on it unless you have specific questions, but it is still a concern. So we feel very important to know exactly how or to approach the business assistance program, if you choose to do that, the right way. And something that passed the legal muster and not violate the gift clause. So simply put, the gift clause in Arizona Constitution is out late right here. Neither the state or any county, city, town shall ever make any donation or grant by subsidy or otherwise to any individual association or corporation. Now, it's a really short clause, you can read the full text at that link. It's not much longer than that, but it's pretty, simply put. There's been different rulings where people have tested this in the courts, where courts have ruled certain interpretations of it. And so Joel included some of those in here as well. Lots of great reading. And I'm going to skip ahead. Part of the big concern is, why we are concerned about this is because Senate Bill 1487. This is where any state legislature can submit to the Attorney General to investigate any alleged violation by a city, town or county that they believe violated a state statute. And if it is found to be true by the AG, any violation can result in the withholding of state shared revenue. And so the League of Cities ultimately has recommended that cities and towns consult with their legal counsel, determine any legality and the risk of any of these types of business assistant programs.
But if, but if we're worried about that and every other city and county is doing it, we're going to end up looking pretty bad. I mean, I think we should.
Sure, I think.
Push the limits on this, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think many, those that have done it, the, the few that have done a business assistance program have come to this determination through their legal counsel that they're set up their program, how they're doing it. The, the benefit outweighs the risk. So certainly we just want to make sure that that's the case for any program that we do too.
And the AG won't give us an opinion?
They will not give us an opinion. As you've seen the first bullet there, AG and the Governor's Office have declined to give an opinion because they feel it creates a conflict of interest for this. Yeah, Senate Bill fourteen eighty-seven.
They don't give an opinion, just wait for some legislator to get teed off and out of city and, oh.
I'm gonna invite Janine Salia.
Ask our opinion when they took her, did they?
Right, right. They usually don't ask for our opinions. Janine is gonna review some of the things that we've learned in our research about the different business assistance programs that are out there.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, yes, so in terms of CARES funding and small business and nonprofit support, you've heard from Matt that the initial coronavirus funding that was directly from the feds to the communities of five hundred thousand or more came out a little bit earlier. They were the first ones able to respond and kind of get programs started. Each are at different stages now. Everybody hasn't fully implemented. In fact, Maricopa County just came out. They're going to have applications ready soon. So not everybody has actually launched yet, but they are well on their way.
How much, how much of a head start did Maricopa County have on everybody?
Well, they were one of the five that received the funding, so.
Time-wise, that was how, how, how far ahead of us are they?
March or April, they got their funding.
Oh, ninety day, three months ahead of us.
Yes, and the obligation they have though also, those five communities, is that they have to spend the funds by December thirtieth, right? So. And also those federal funds come with some, they steer how that money can be spent or what it can be used on for some of those business needs. So there's some other obligations there. Seems roughly, as we look at that, on average, about twenty percent, as Matt indicated, is going towards small business support of the total overall funds. It's probably a little bit too early to say how well they're doing with things or how receptive the businesses are to them because they are still being launched right now. And because of those federal strings, some communities are saying if you've already gotten a PPP loan, you can't apply. Or if you have other sources of income or only certain types of expenses are eligible to apply for. So that may determine how appealing it is to a small business to apply for or how eligible they are for that matter. Whoops.
Can I ask a question?
Oh.
Sure, I'm sorry, Matt.
That's all right.
So is it mostly like for rent, utilities, or is it for actual capital loss of funds?
Much of it is rent and utilities, but it varies greatly. It, it, it's really hard to even do a chart of apples to apples to show what people are doing. Some communities are making nonprofits eligible, some are not. Some are making home-based businesses eligible, some are not. So it's really each community is doing what is kind of good for, you know, their businesses. So it's a hard question to answer, but most, I think, are doing rent. And I'm gonna go through a few examples as well.
You know, SRP bills are gonna be used. I don't know if you guys have seen the weather coming up. There's no break for weeks, so.
So as Matt mentioned earlier, once the funding became available throughout the state to the municipalities, the municipalities have been a little bit slow on the act. They're a little bit more deliberate in looking at how COVID-19 is going to impact the overall community. So some have come out with programs, some have not. We have seen a couple deployed programs. Each of them are unique in how they administer the program. So for example, I mentioned how people apply for the program is different amongst communities. Who's eligible? Who makes a final decision on what gets funded? What expenses are covered? If you have to show proof of funding and how you spent that, and if there's clawbacks, so that if you don't spend it on what you said you were going to spend it on, do you have to give it back? Those are all unique. Pinal County did launch the Business Sustainability Program and is offering a one-time reimbursement to businesses of up to fifteen thousand dollars per business. And that covers for the business three months' rent and utilities. That's what their program covers, very low barriers to access that funding. Available to all businesses in Pinal County that are in unincorporated areas of the county.
And they've already done that.
I'm sorry?
And they've already done that.
They have launched, yes.
And, and they got, they're on the same schedule as us, right? So.
They are. They, they launched on June fifteenth. They close it July fifteenth. So it's actually in a period right now where people can apply.
What do you mean by very low barrier? How low is low?
They don't require, they, they require minimal information from the business, minimal documentation. They don't have to show that they have any kind of license. If they have a lien against the, if the county has a lien against them, they don't consider that. As I spoke with Tim Knievel, he said the intent was to just get the funding in the business's hands as quickly as possible. They don't have a clawback. They don't require any follow-up documentation. If you say, I'm gonna spend it on rent, you don't have to supply information that proves that you did that. You don't have to pay anything back to the county if your business goes under. So there, they just, it was very intent on, apparently seeing an immediate need where businesses needed that cash flow and they just wanted to get it to them very quickly.
Did we communicate this to our local business community really well?
Our local businesses in the city of Apache Junction would not be eligible because we're incorporated. So this is only for unincorporated areas.
Okay, I thought it was just the opposite of ways then.
So basically, a business owner or a person who said they were a business owner could get fifteen hundred dollars and?
Fifteen thousand.
Or fifty thousand and, and put it in their pocket and walk away. If there's no checking up on it or anything, whoa.
The, the application did, did require them to submit a lot of information.
Information.
Oh, okay.
It's not just a, hey, you know, send me your name, I'll write you a check. There are something.
That's what it sounded like.
Right. But it, but it's compared to some of the others that we'll go through, this one is one that's probably a little bit easier to access.
Well, I'm a little disturbed that we're dragging our feet and have no sense of urgency and these folks are already, I mean, our, our merchants are just as important as them. And it's, it's terrible out there. It's a hundred and ten and business is not good. So, Matt, I'm looking at you. I'd be looking at Brian if he was there. Let's, let's go sooner rather than later on this, so.
Yeah, and we'll need direction of the council, exactly how you want to distribute the funds, what type of program you want to do. And that's why we're reviewing these, to ensure that you have the information to make an informed decision.
So at the end of this discussion, I would like to have a timeline of when can we get this going?
Yeah, we can have a direction to staff on the next meeting and, and you, you all can direct us how to do the.
So two weeks again, and yet the county businesses already have money and we're not even gonna talk about it for two more weeks, which is then a month, which is another month's rent, which is another month's huge SRP bill. So I'm not really happy with the, I mean, everybody in here has jobs. These folks are losing their businesses. I would like to see us speed this up somehow.
Did the county already get their money or are they spending from reserves hoping to, and will replenish with their money that they're gonna receive?
Um, I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know if they, I, I believe they submitted a couple weeks before us. So I think they had their money by the time they started this, but we can double-check that and verify.
They started this June fifteenth, so they would have had to have, if they've spending the money that they already received, they would have had to have got it three weeks ago.
Right.
Which we didn't even get. I'm, I'm, I'm just laying out a timeframe here. I'm not arguing anything or any, but we didn't even know about this until when? April or May twentieth or something like that?
It was something like that. The, the Governor's Office, again, didn't include the cities until they released it, basically, in, in mid or late May. I could get the exact date for you.
It was late, mid to late May.
But we did know that it would be coming, so.
We knew the allocation would be coming, correct?
Though I would, would have preferred to hit the ground running instead of just now deciding, so. Go ahead, Janine.
Thank you, Mayor. And also, just to give you some indication of the, the level of interest in their program, so they've had it open for two weeks now. As of July second, they've received a hundred and twenty applications and have granted two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. They anticipate that dollar amount will actually go up because a lot of the applications they received that are in that count were either incomplete or they need to get a little more information, maybe documentation. Or somewhere snail mailed in and they have a whole digital process that this application actually goes through. So they'll have to follow up on those. Another, though, that you see on the screen is the city of Maricopa. They actually did start the Maricopa Business Reemergence Program. And they used the community input, public input to determine how they wanted to best support local business and nonprofits. And their council determined they wanted to allocate one point three five million of their CARES funds. Their total is about six million, so it's about twenty-two percent toward small business and nonprofits. They're administering it a little bit differently, though. They are actually going to have folks submit an application. Their, the costs that they cover are only for cost of purchasing personal protective equipment and materials that are necessary by the business to help administer recommendations for COVID health practices. And then the other thing that they have, the county was rent and utilities, theirs is personal protective equipment and rent, no utilities. They had their application period only open for two and a half weeks. It actually closed today, July sixth. How they're going to work that is they're going to have an application review committee look at all of the applications that came in. And then they will be making some prioritizations based on the funding. If you have a physical commercial space, the severity of the impact that your business experienced because of COVID-19, if they've not received other funding assistance such as PPP or IDA loans and no franchises will be eligible. So they're gonna have this committee make a recommendation and then the recommendation's gonna go to the city council. And the city council on July sixteenth will make the final determination of who gets what funding.
And then once they do that, so we're talking about Maricopa.
The city, yeah.
So another community that's ahead of us, so starting July, the day after, they can start helping their businesses.
Yes, I, I do want to specify too, though, this one is a little bit more rigorous in their requirements. They will require a contract with the city, an agreement that has terms and conditions for how the money is to be spent.
That's reasonable.
If they don't spend it and provide documentation as proof, they will have to pay that money back. So they do have a clawback clause in that. And, and the money, amount of money that's going to be eligible for per business is yet unknown because they're going, it's gonna be based on how many applications they receive, what the need is, how the committee decides to split that up, so. But yes, they will be eligible to use it for those purposes.
So Joel.
After July sixteenth.
In two weeks, we come back with direction to staff, which is just basically to get started then. So then we wait another two weeks before we can vote on it. Is there any way we can speed that up and maybe have? Matt, once there's a special, you know, can we, is there any way we can expedite that again?
You can have, excuse me, you can have a special meeting if that's what you're asking.
Meaning we could all come in in a mid-week, the following week, and just come in and vote on that and get it going?
Well, and I think if the direction to staff was specific enough about what program you wanted staff to implement, I don't know that we'd need anything beyond direction to staff.
So it could all happen in two weeks?
It, it potentially could. I mean, for example, we've talked to Pinal County, if we wanted to piggyback on theirs and have them even administer our program, because that's part of the issue too, is staff has to administer these things. They, they said they'd be willing to, to do that, that sort of thing, if we followed their exact same guidelines. Whether that's what you all want to do, that's why we're here educating about what, what they require and, and all of that. If you want something like Maricopa, you could tell us that direction to staff, you want to mimic it like Maricopa or something like that.
So Janine, when you're talking to them, then let's be thinking that we're gonna do this quicker rather than, so.
Yes, as soon as you all are ready for us to move, we will move.
The, the other part of the decision would be how much of that total funding you'd want dedicated towards business assistance versus these other areas, so. That'd be part of that.
You said that we could have the county, did I hear you say we could have the county administer our program?
You want to explain that, Janine?
Does that entail paying them then to do?
Potentially a small administrative fee because their staff will have to go through those applications. So they actually have a process set up. It's, it's pretty sophisticated where an application comes in online, it first routes through the IT department and it's geocoded to determine if it's actually in the county or not. They would expand our boundaries to make sure that our GIS layers show when businesses are in Apache Junction. Then it routes to Arizona at Work. They have a partnership with them who looks at the completeness of the application, makes sure that it's eligible expenses that they're looking to do, then routes to their finance department.
And it just takes more funds away from us?
Well, it's their, so they're, so that's the administration part. Once it's all approved and everybody makes sure everything is there, then it goes back to economic development. They do the check requests and then the checks get sent out. They do try to turn that around in a week's time. So all of that, we talked to them and they said, wow, you've got this system already set up. If we were to start this from scratch, you know, we would have to determine how that would work for Apache Junction. If that system is something that you would be interested. I just, I think the only down, the downside to that is, and they may be able to do this, but it, you know, you kind of have to go with how they have the system set up in order to just kind of go into their flow. The only change would be, you know, location of the business. But we could ask them to, if we wanted more documentation or if we wanted other, you know, types of information provided by the applicant, they might have to modify their process a little bit for us. But they, they'd be willing to consider it.
Am I hearing that it would be too difficult for our staff to do this, to administer our own programs?
No, I wouldn't say too difficult. This would just be the quickest option and it wouldn't.
Build it.
Rather than reinventing the wheel, we would pay somebody else to do what they're already doing.
And that's why we asked, yeah.
And I have used as an example, we, we, when we had the CDBG funding available for the business facade improvement, we administered that in-house and it wasn't a problem at all. We didn't have, though, hundreds of applications potentially coming to us in a week or, you know, two period of time. So, so we can do that in-house. We, we have done something similar in the past.
So this will just be you and Elon?
Uh, we'd probably have to involve finance. There, we would definitely want checks and balances, so, you know, we make sure.
Which I was just gonna ask, Matt, can we shift some folks around to help other departments to?
Yeah, with the grant processes, many departments are already involved and we'd probably use the similar structures we have in place as far as the routine grant applications that we go through. But this would be a different level where there'd be review of applications and, you know, a committee that would have to make a decision and.
Yes, and I think depending on what you determine you want to make eligible for the businesses. For example, if it's rent and they need only submit, you know, April, May, June's rent statements that are show paid or, or whatever, and we just have to reimburse that versus PPP equipment, how many employees did you have? You know, so the complexity of what you want to do can certainly simplify that as well.
And also, rather than necessarily handing it off to a different agency, wouldn't it be possible to have a different agency come in and help where we need? Like, maybe certain department would need more help where maybe another department wouldn't. I'm just trying to figure out how to conserve the funds because once they're, you know what I mean? We, we want to stretch them and help as many people here as we can. And the more that goes to the administering the program, the less.
We would figure it out as a staff, just as the mayor suggested, there'd be resources among departments that we'd share, make sure this happened.
Volunteer Al Bravo to help. But Al does have, maybe Al can get the word out quicker than, than just.
Yeah, we'd have a big.
So I don't, and I don't know if you know this answer yet or, because it's, everything is starting and, but are we gonna be looking at city licenses to make sure that they're actually licensed?
Some of the programs out there. In fact, I saw one today, I think it's, so Queen Creek, just last Wednesday evening, I believe, passed a, it's not even on the slide, but they, their council approved a resolution to reimburse businesses. Now, they are only reimbursing for costs incurred with enhanced sanitization, employee safety, and customer safety. Up to fif, uh, excuse me, up to twelve thousand five hundred per business and it's based on number of employees. So it's five hundred dollars per employee, but it's personal protective equipment and safety, health and safety. No rent, no utilities, nothing like that.
And then, just to follow up on that question, though, you, I forget which, I don't know if it was the county or Maricopa or wherever it was, said that they don't do franchises. But what, what kind of a safety on our part do we have for a company who has a business license in Apache Junction, has a business license in Mesa, has a business license in Gilbert? They all, they run their business, it's all together, but they have business license in all these different cities. How do we safeguard ourselves from giving them money when they're already getting money from other cities and such?
To decide? We could say that they have to only use it for the business here. Isn't it up for the council to decide that? Isn't that why we're here?
I'm asking, I'm asking what other cities.
No, it's a great point and a lot of these applications, they'll ask, have you received any paycheck protection program money from the, directly from the federal government? Have you received it from other cities?
From the federal government. I'm talking about every city and town in the state has now got these funds.
Yes, and most seem to be doing, have this to. Yes, and most seem to be doing, have this stipulation that you have to have a physical presence or brick and mortar in the city in which you would apply for the funds. So someone who has a brick and mortar in Mesa, but maybe does business here, wouldn't be, if they're headquartered elsewhere, they wouldn't be eligible for our funding, but if you were a local business here.
And we could put it in there that they'd had to have had the. Address prior, or prior to a certain date or something of that nature.
And in fact, Queen Creek, I think that's how that question initially came up, does require that they have a business license, that they were, and they base the reimbursement amount based on how many employees you had on March 1st of 2020. So there are, each program, like I say, has different ways it's set up for how to kind of control that a little bit.
And these are the types of things we have to hear from you all to know what program, you know, how you'd want it implemented and what you'd want on the application and that sort of thing. So we've heard of some things, but that's what we need to hear back, how you'd like this program.
Very helpful discussion. I do also want to mention that after both houses of Congress approved an extension and President Trump signed on Saturday the legislation that would extend the PPP loans. It was set to expire June 30th. There was still $130 billion left in the fund that small businesses hadn't yet taken. The first fund dried up really quickly, and then the second fund was slower to go. So of the 660 billion that was allocated, there's 130 billion still left in there. And now there's an extension to August 8th for businesses to apply for that funding as well. Another thing that they are willing to consider, this may allow businesses who have already received a PPP loan, it may, under certain circumstances, allow them to consider a second PPP loan. It's not a guarantee, it's something that they were trying to work in there. So that is also a new update since Saturday. I'm sorry, I'm going to quickly move through these last few. You, also during some of your previous discussions about this funding, you talked about nonprofits and where do they fit in? As I mentioned, a lot of the nonprofits, depending on the program, it varies. It just, some allow certain types of nonprofits, some don't have an allocation for nonprofits at all, so it really does depend. And I do know that sometimes nonprofits have access to funding that small businesses don't. So, you know, there is a consideration of do we want them competing with one another for the same pot of funds? I spent a little bit of time with Heather Patel, who is now the grants administrator for Pinellas County. She gave me some very helpful insight into the county's CDBG coronavirus funding. It's a very specific account that was available to nonprofits throughout Pinellas County. Heather's been reaching out to everyone in Pinellas County, including Apache Junction, to encouraging them to apply for the funds. And thus far, four of the Apache Junction nonprofits, four located within the city limits, are set to receive funding that ranges anywhere from 10 up to 25,000. So that's a piece of good news. I do know who they are.
And we know who they are?
CAFSA will receive 25,000, Salvation Army 15,000, Horizon 10,000, and the Superstition Food Bank 24,000. Additionally, though, she had some Pinellas County agencies that aren't necessarily located here in Apache Junction, but they serve Apache Junction residents. And they also got some coronavirus, CDBG coronavirus funding that ranged anywhere from 10 to 80,000 dollars. And one of the stipulations that Heather did, because she loves AJ, she required that when she granted those funds that they split that evenly when they service, you know, clients for those funding evenly between Casa Grande and Apache Junction. So that was great news for us. Do you want to know who they are? Cara is receiving 80,000 dollars. CBI, which is Community Bridges, is receiving 10,000. NCHP, which is National Community Health Partners, is receiving 50,000, and United Way of Pinellas County, 30,000. As I said, any, excuse me, any nonprofit in the county was eligible to apply. And the application period opened June 22nd, and it closed yesterday. How it closed on a Sunday, I don't know. But now that it is closed, she has let me know that they did receive more requests for funding than they had funding available. So there are actually three additional Apache, not Apache Junction, but three nonprofits that serve Apache Junction that potentially could get some funding, additional funding, three more. But they have to see how that works out with when the applications came in. So that is a quick snapshot kind of of what we've been seeing happening out there. We're going to continue to watch. And of course, however you want us to move forward on this, we are happy to do that.
Matt, is that everything from you too?
Yeah, pretty well. These are just some of the next steps. If you'd let me review some of the bullet points that I heard from you, and then as you continue your discussion, we can take some more notes. But it sounds like many on the council would like a direction to staff for the next meeting.
And I would like.
On the business assistance program.
Direction to staff to be instant instead of weeks more.
So it's.
I think everybody up here would like this urgency.
Other, let's see, things I heard from Councilmember Struble, I think, we'd like to require that, make sure they're licensed in the city, that they haven't received other, well, and they have brick and mortar in the city. They haven't received other CARES funding, whether it's from the federal or other cities where they may also be licensed. So they're not double or triple or quadruple dipping. I think I heard that.
So would the brick and mortar exclude home businesses in the city?
I don't know how any of them have addressed home businesses, Janine, have they?
I know we have a lot of.
I just meant you wouldn't have outside businesses that just.
Yeah, most are not allowing home-based businesses to be eligible. And I will share with you, just for perspective, and how much funding would be available and how many businesses we have. I got a business license listed as of June 29th. And it showed brick and mortar in Apache Junction, about 1,200 of them here. But backed out, that include mobile home parks, and that included leases for like duplexes and things like that, some vending companies. So if you back all of those out, you've got approximately 860 storefront businesses. When we looked at kind of what's essential, what was deemed not essential, kind of who had to close, who was able to stay open, I'm, and these are all estimates, because we just kind of, you know, we don't have any hard data. But about 32% or 280 businesses potentially would be at risk because they either were forced to close, they, you know, and that also would include any of our, you know, national brands. Ross, you know, that, they were impacted, but do you want them to be eligible? So, but about 32% of our total of the 860 storefronts that we would deem eligible. So if you average the 20% of the funding that has, you know, kind of been the number that cities are using to go to small business, that's about 960,000 of the 4.8. If you assume there are about 280 potential businesses in your community that are really at risk and could use some funding, and you granted them 5,000 each, you're already at 1.4 million. So it's, while it sounds like it's a lot of money, you know, you kind of do want to determine, you know, where's that cutoff? That doesn't include any home base. So you've, I'm sure there's probably a lot of home base folks that really were impacted as well. You know, but if you add them to this list, you know, we exponentially increase the number that might be wanting some funding.
Janine, that 280 did or did not include the chain stores?
It does.
Okay.
It does. So it, I could give you a little bit of a breakdown. We've got 54 restaurants. They were all impacted in some way, shape, or form. 61 retail business storefronts that were deemed nonessential, and 165 service businesses that were deemed nonessential. So you think of your, you know, your beauty shops and your masseuse and, you know, any service that, you know, people couldn't go to the office anymore. So, and then the good news is that we had 580 that were, you know, assumed to be less at risk because they were deemed essential, and they could remain open, the hardware stores and the grocery stores and the Circle K's and, you know, the gas stations. There's a lot when you start to add those up, so.
Liquor stores.
Liquor stores, yes.
Got to get the people through.
So how many, do we have any idea how many PPP loans went to businesses here in Apache Junction?
Not city-specific. So the SBA puts out information statewide, but they don't have a specific community or by zip code or city or anything like that.
So we could ask on the application, did you receive any? But there'd be no way for us to verify that. We just were land.
Yeah, and you know, and I know that there are some businesses, because I've talked to several businesses, you know, and I really tried to go out to the restaurants and determine what their needs were. That varies greatly, you know, kind of depending on the restaurant, too. Some are in a small space. It's still a mom and pop, but they don't have a lot of monthly overhead. Where you've got some that are larger with a lot of space, maybe just launched.
But they're still struggling. I mean, if you take.
Absolutely.
A pizza place, they're only having, half their tables open.
Right.
So they're all cut in half for the summer, so they've got to allow the drive-through businesses are thriving and the delivery businesses, but the, some of them are not. I was on a conference call with the Pinellas County mayor's a couple of weeks ago. Coolidge actually said their retail went up. Is that because they don't have a lot of restaurants and they're just going on their groceries? I could see groceries and Walmart being up because of the massive amounts of groceries that were sold. But I found that hard to believe, and I don't see how we could be because we have a different type of businesses than only groceries.
It's a good question. I don't know the exact answer on Coolidge, but certainly that's the case for us. Sometimes we don't see quite as dramatic of a decrease like the state because they have a much more diverse amount of business types and tax types. But us, we're limited. Most of our retail sales come from, you know, retail, shopping, grocery stores, that sort of thing. So, Janine, you can.
Cities like Tempe and Scottsdale are very restaurant-based, so.
Yes, and it's a great point, Mayor, because we were actually quite fortunate that we had so many businesses that were deemed essential and could stay open. And if you just kind of drive down the trail, you know, I know we were doing that to monitor along the way, too, and saying, open, open, open. You know, I mean, and the majority had stayed open. So I think we probably had fared better than some of the other communities that maybe had the more boutique type of, you know, stores or, you know, a lot more of the nonessential where disposable income's a little bit freer and some of those, you know, we had the more essential needs here. I think the same way when we, you know, the housing crash happened. You know, we didn't have a whole lot of housing starts, and we were all, you know, frustrated with that. But then in the long run, when everything started to crash and neighborhoods started to, you know, be abandoned, we fared a little bit better because just of our current circumstance. So I think that we have been doing okay. I know certainly we have businesses who are struggling immensely. But I actually have to say, when I went and talked to a lot of the restaurants specifically, I was surprised but proud of how many of them said, we're doing all right. We're holding our own. How, you know, can you give me a comparison of, you know, this year compared to last year? And some of them were like, we're okay. So that, now that was not the majority, but certainly there were many that were feeling pretty good about where they were at.
Some of us have gained a lot of weight supporting those local businesses.
Yeah, that's going to be, I mean, and I, I'm not saying that we have to get down and dirty to have people prove to us that they actually need it and stuff. But I think there is a need for verification of some kind. I agree. There are some businesses out there that haven't missed a beat. There's some that have really missed a beat, and they've had to close, you know, and everything. Even the ones that were deemed essential, unless, except, I've got to be honest with you, like unless they're a liquor store, even the essential ones that were, stayed open are hurt, are down. It's, and all that. But, you know, we've also got to look out for the, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we spend the money correctly and make sure that we aren't just giving the money to somebody because they say they need it. And I think we have to have some kind of a look back period to make sure that they did actually spend the money. Part of the, you know, with a lot of the federal money that's coming out, they were slow on getting their regulations and everything out, and they're still working on the regulations. But all the money that they're getting, the PPP monies, that's not going to be included on, the businesses can't include that money, the expenditures on their tax returns. And not that, you know, so people's profits, they're counting those PPP monies basically as revenue now. But I think it's going to be very important that we, for us, to looking out for the Apache Junction's money, the citizens' money, is that we do have some kind of a look back to make sure that they do spend the money the way they're supposed to.
Thank you. That's great feedback. Is there any sense from the council on the types of expenditures you would consider for reimbursement? So we've heard examples of rent, utilities, PPP equipment. If there's some, if there's a way we can narrow that a little bit, we can.
I got, well, one thing is, you know, there's some, not very many businesses, but there's some of them that may own their building. And I don't know if they have a mortgage on them, or if they're, well, in fact, I know one, it's already, it's paid off. And I can't see eliminating them for, you know, the ability, because they still had electric bills, they still had a lot of other overhead expenses that they had. So I would definitely say we need to include the electric on that as well.
Yeah, I think rent and utilities are the main ones to keep, yeah.
Do we have a feel of who's struggling and what they're struggling with? Have we, like, kind of checked in with them, or?
Yes, and not, primarily with more of the restaurants because we've heard that they seemingly are the ones who have had the greatest impact. And yes, we did ask them kind of what, you know, just some general questions of when they might expect to return back to normal, how much additional they're spending per month on PPP or, you know, other cleaning-related equipment. Kind of some of their top key issues that they're facing. Interestingly, of the ones I spoke with, only three identified cash flow as an immediate key issue. However, you kind of have to read into that a little bit because some of their, what they were saying is consumers, consumer confidence being down and being afraid to come in and dine at the restaurant, which then in turn leads to lower, you know, cash flow because, you know, fewer people are eating there. So, you know, I'm sure a lot of that is related. But certainly, and to your point, Vice Mayor, I think that some of the other programs did allow for not only rent, but a mortgage payment. And I suppose we could consult with an accountant or someone who could do, if you make a determination on what your, if your building is paid off and you declare a certain amount, you know, that would be.
They allowed for interest on mortgages, not the mortgage interest.
Okay, and we could work, we could, you know, see how we could work through that. But definitely, you know, I didn't ask specifically what bills are you behind in to that degree. But just in general, I think people, what I'm seeing in most of these programs, they're staying away from employee, you know, reimbursement for employees. That's just a whole lot of, you know, more headache to have to deal with. So no one's really touching that. So it's, you know, just ways to kind of help relieve, relieve the.
Rent, utilities, and PPE. That makes sense.
So we'll bring forward those, rent, utilities, PPE. How about, is there a cap? We've heard 10,000 for some, 15,000, three months or 15,000 was Pinellas County's. Any sense that you all have of how you'd like that?
What does everybody, I mean, if you have two employees, it's different than if you have 15 employees.
Well, and the size of the building would be bigger if you, per the number of employees that you would have.
And I had, you know, spoke with a landlord who gave a comparison of, you know, one tenant who was paying about 1,500 in overhead a month, and the other one is over 6,000, just based on the, you know, size and the.
Yeah, and some businesses have different, they're different, so they're going to have higher utilities just because of what they do than other ones. I understand our electricity is, it's summertime, so obviously electricity and stuff is high, but that's, yeah.
I think that's why some of them said three months of utilities or rent, some cases rent, but not to exceed 15,000 dollars or 10,000 dollars.
If we capped it, just using your number, I have to turn my phone on again, but the 280 times 15,000 is what? Does somebody have a calculator?
Yeah.
I don't have my phone on, I'm sorry.
Times 15,000 is what, 4. something million? 280 times 5,000 is 1.2.
So I'm.
Well, that brings to the other, how much of the 4.8 million do you want a lot towards business help? I think we have to decide that. Unless you're saying you don't want any of it to go towards reserves, none of it to go to public safety. I don't think you're saying that, but we want to talk about the amount that you want. I don't think you're saying that, but we want to talk about the amount that you want dedicated towards business assistance.
On another, just a side note there, you know, there was talk back in, I think after they announced the one in late May or whatever it was, that in June there might be another 5 million coming. Is there any thought, is there any, is there any, any more news on that one?
Just a little bit that Congress is discussing. You mean at the federal level? More like a second CARES Act or something like that, yeah, or a second PPP loan?
Well, second.
They're discussing.
For states, counties, and cities.
We haven't heard any specifics on it. All we know that in general they're talking about.
So they're probably just the campaign.
Yeah.
This is, this is related, but it's not related. I'm curious to know, there's a lot of people throwing numbers around, well, they're making more on unemployment than they were working. I personally don't know anybody that is. Is that true or not? They're.
Yes, very true.
Arizona's increased the amount that they can get.
The federal government added on an extra $100.
And what industries is that in? What?
Everybody.
Name one.
Well, my.
Restaurant.
I have family members that had actually applied and it was like 7, 750 a week.
So they're making more than they were working?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Did the 600 add up June 30th?
That's why when, when the initial, when the governor announced the initial easing up of the restrictions and stuff, all of our retail and restaurant, all of our retail and restaurant had a hard, hard, hard time of hiring people back because they could maintain their. They could, they were making two, three times as much as they were.
Yeah, I believe Arizona's unemployment insurance covers about 260 a week, but the feds, when this whole thing first started, added an additional 600 per week.
600.
So people were making 860 per week, which normally on regular unemployment would be 260. But I believe that was set to expire June 30th?
It was, yeah, but I haven't heard.
And I'm not sure if it was extended or not. I have heard that they are talking about extending it.
It's mid-July.
Is it mid-July? Okay.
But it was, it was very true. It was.
And I did hear that from a few of the restaurants of, you know, people then getting them wanting to come back to work.
All right. What else do we have to do then?
So we just need to know, yeah, an amount, do you want 15%, 20% going towards a business assistance type program of the four?
I would go with 25.
Higher rather than later. I mean, this money's intended for the most people, not for us to run the city with.
Sure.
I think.
Do a better job, is it? Well, I don't want to, I don't want, excuse me, I don't want to hear about payrolls and raises and radios. Let's get this done, let's get this worked out. The governor had an executive order which allowed businesses over a certain amount of time not to get evicted if they couldn't make the rent. That order's expired. These guys are out in the wind right now, just waiting for it. So, I mean, I saw this presentation and I saw a nice layout of the radios and the raises, and then I saw legal implications if you tried to help the businesses. So it, no, we wouldn't even be down this road right now if the mayor didn't bring this up. I don't believe it ever would have been talked about. So we really do need to do a better job. This money was designed for the people and the businesses that got affected over this crisis. It's not for, let's see what we can do to make the city run better the way we want it to run. We, this is designed to help the people that really got hurt in this. No one in this room lost their jobs. These people out there did. So we need to spend more time figuring out, see, it should have been revert. We should have looked at this presentation, said, "Hey, look, this is what we worked out that we can help the businesses with." And then, hey, what kind of percentage can we use to start doing some raises? Or what kind of percentage can we use to start doing some radios? No, you got it backwards. Do a better job.
It sounds to me like you want a larger percentage in the focus, priority to be on the community and then what's left over to be on assisting the city.
Exactly.
Then let's flip the numbers then, instead of doing 25%.
Can, can we also look at the fact that the city will still have to run when we lose a million dollars because of COVID, COVID-related loss? And we need to have some of that back in our coffers or we're gonna lose employees, we're gonna lose programs, et cetera, et cetera, because we have a minimum now of $900,000 that we're gonna lose in state shared revenues. That is COVID-related funds, which is what this money was allocated for.
I'm not suggesting to throw 4.8 million dollars into the businesses. I'm just suggesting if we're gonna start focusing on the priorities of the spending this money, I think personally, I think the businesses.
That's exactly what we're doing, is business.
Well, that's what I was saying, though, if the mayor didn't open up the can of worms, what about the businesses? We wouldn't be 40 minutes into this conversation right now.
Oh, I disagree.
Businesses, we don't have the tax revenue to run.
Yeah, I mean, if you're running a business and your truck goes down, you gotta get your truck going so that you can make more money. So all of our businesses are the trucks that make the city money, too, through tax. So that's why it's important to keep them going. I think the city's gonna be okay. We're not gonna close and we're not gonna lay anybody off.
Well, we may not be able to keep our roads open.
Mr. Mayor, if I can clarify one thing, the main purpose of the CARES Act was to sustain and uphold the public safety during the COVID and 19 pandemic. And it's the only way that we got the funds is by submitting our personnel costs that we've spent through the current fiscal year and through the next fiscal year to even allow the governor, even allow us to get the money. So I just want to emphasize that the purpose of the CARES Act was to shore up public safety in these times. The governor, in his explanation of releasing the funds the way he did, said that he wanted to give cities the maximum flexibility to address things as they saw fit. And our only goal, staff, has been to help you walk through that process, to understand better how you each want to do that.
As I'm seeing what Maricopa and Pinal County are doing, I don't see them talking about.
Yeah, and there's 91 cities and towns in Arizona, and we shared a couple that we know are actually doing it, so.
Did we offer any hazard pay for our public safety?
We have not yet offered hazard pay. No, no city in Arizona has.
Can that be part of this?
Absolutely, yes.
And that might be a way to do it, too, is, I know it seems unfair, but we're looking at the 2.5 increase across the board. If it's intended to focus on public safety, then focus it on public safety and provide the increase in that area and, you know, hold off on the increase across the board. That would be a way to justify it because these people are, that is hazard pay. They don't, for how long did they not even know when they were going into these addresses to help people? What they were going into? How long did it take to get that information from the state? And so maybe that's a way to look at it as well. Not that the staff isn't valuable, not that we don't value you, everybody, but sometimes there's a time and a place to hold off on the raise. So that's just something to think about as well.
Anybody else?
Works in rec. They've been out there with people and having to do activities and stuff.
So I heard 25%, that's how we'll put it in for the direction of staff. And of course, the council has the ultimate decision of how that ends up in that vote. And then, is there any further opinions about 10,000, 15,000, three months, up to a certain amount, like 15,000?
Well, that's based on the 25% of, that's 1.2 million dollars.
Right.
Whatever number we have potential businesses to apply, that's a, that's a simple arithmetic.
Okay.
I mean, I, because if we, if we say 25%, but then we say 15,000, that's gonna exceed the 25%.
So we'll arrive at that number based on the, some of the business numbers?
Of what potential businesses would potentially apply.
And maybe the percentage needs to be increased.
We can't really then determine anything else until we have done the businesses. Right? I mean, if it's the number of businesses. I know, you're right.
It's a simple arithmetic problem.
You're right.
We have to have, you know, it's A, A times B equals C. And we know the variables, but we're just looking for the number of businesses. And we, so we, that's, that's the unknown right there. If we're gonna limit it to brick and mortar in Apache Junction, for-profit businesses, and they have to prove, you know, we're just not gonna give them $15,000 or whatever. They have to prove that they have to actually have it, or $10,000 or whatever the number is.
I was gonna say, if you stipulate what it can be used for, so if you say rent, three-month rent, it may not be $15,000 worth. It might be a $3,000 bill, yeah. So that's just a cap. And then I do know that some of the communities are doing the first come, first served. So when they run out of funds, they're not seeking to supply every single potential business with funds. It's, you know, whoever needs it. And the other question that's important for you to share with us is how much of an impact? So we've seen like, they have to prove they've been impacted 25%. So they show their sales decreased by, you know, that's the number. Because some businesses may not have, you know, seen as much of an impact. Do you still want to fund them? So what is that, what is that?
What's that number?
What's the, yeah, pain point?
Yeah, I think there's certain businesses that don't need it at all, like.
And we need to hear that from you tonight.
Medical marijuana probably doesn't need it. And also, did we mention chains? I don't know that chains, that I don't think chains really need to be protected either, like.
Janine mentioned franchises in other cities, how they approach it. They, some disallow.
And some franchises are locally owned by an individual, so they're.
Franchises is different than a chain, for sure.
Gotcha, yeah.
I was gonna say, yeah, that's, that's a hard one to, yeah, that's a hard, because there's franchises out there. That's what they, they only own a one site, but they own a franchise, but that doesn't.
And you'll see individual franchises close because of that, even though the corporate is strong.
So you want no company owned?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then do you want to specify the impact? So for those who have done okay, if the funding's available for rent, they may just apply because it's there and available. So do you want, do you want a threshold of, here's how much COVID impacted us? Do we set that minimum that they have to then provide some documentation for?
I think we do.
Yeah.
I agree.
And the 25%?
Reduction in revenues?
And, and some are 25% impact, so, you know, it may not be a.
I mean, that, I mean, I'm just being very real here. Are we gonna go by somebody's, I'm just being very real. Are we gonna go by somebody's financial statements? Or are we gonna be able to have a city clerk tell us what their sales tax revenue are? I, I'm, I'm just being very real. A financial statement can say anything anybody wants to say on it until it gets put on a tax return or gets audited. So I don't know if that's really a legitimate, I, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm just not sure that's a legitimate thing because you can formulate any kind of a balance or profit and loss that you want.
Well, I was gonna say, could we actually formulate it from the sales tax that they paid in the last quarter?
But we can't know.
And we can't, we can't know that. But they could also share that with us if they chose to.
And in no way, and just so you understand, I have no way impugning anybody. I'm not impugning, I'm not saying anybody out there would do that. I'm just speaking real world. I, and I'm just, that's, that was part of the problem with the PP, I'm being very honest people. That was part of the problem with the PPP and everything, that people took advantage of it and.
I think Joel wants to say something about this.
When do you want to come back to either do a resolution or a direction to staff? I hear there's some urgency.
Urgency.
And there is.
Whatever makes it happen quicker.
So.
So you could consider calling a special meeting next week as soon as we can have this done? If you want to then adopt the resolution the week after.
So busy that we can't come in here for a night.
Would that give staff enough time to do something in a week?
I think we know it well enough.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
There's a special night that you'd like. There's a Monday night art commission, I believe, on the 13th. I don't think, there's a planning and zoning meeting on the 14th. And I don't know if there's anything on the 15th, a park and rec meeting. So, but you could bump them too, of course.
So what day would be good? 14 or 15?
Let's do the 14th.
Yes?
Okay.
Okay.
7:00 PM? Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
All right.
And just as we craft this one last thing, that's, how long do you want the application period to be open for? Couple of weeks, a month?
Well, that's, Al and you guys need to get that out ASAP.
We'll propose something and make a change.
If they're desperate, if they're hurting as bad as we think, then they're not gonna drag their feet and wait a month. They should get out there and get it right now. Is that it on this subject? I need to bother everybody for a five-minute break. I'll be, we'll be right back. We'll call a meeting back to order. Discussion on temporary authorization of the Pennell County Sheriff's Office to respond to any noise complaints relating to bull riding nights at the hitching post. Gail.
Okey dokey. Um, you know, when something sounds simple, there's usually details that are overlooked or not thought out. And I provided everybody with a list of questions that I have. I've kind of wrote this and rewrote it several different versions, so I'm not sure what all's gonna come out. But this was brought up in an effort, or an attempt to calm the parties down. But my fear is, it's going to calm one party down, but stir up trouble with the other parties in the lawsuit. And a lawsuit is something that the council shouldn't be involved in, no matter what. We passed our code of conduct that we're supposed to be impartial, non, not biased, have no special interests. Part of the reason that everybody got stirred up was there was a lot of misinformation and false statements made that caused a huge uproar from a lot of citizens concerning the hitching post and the activities that happened there. We've had staff members, our own council members, the county attorney, several of the hitching post attorneys, and a county judge all tried to negotiate with the hitching post, and nothing was ever resolved. The judge at sentencing told Mo to be a good neighbor. Well, having the sheriff come in, I guess as a neutral party, that still doesn't help Mo be a good neighbor. It kind of puts an extra burden on the neighbors as far as, at what time can the sheriff actually come? Are they gonna be as quick as what our city is? How many people do they have on, at night? And an action like this does not need the city council. It could be done administratively. And to me, that's not being transparent. And I think it's very important that we are transparent. I don't like this particular idea at all. I want it on record that I don't like any of it, because our staff, our police haven't done anything wrong. And it appears as though the city can't handle our own business.
Gail, I know you got a train of thought going, but I wanted you to clarify something. You say that city staff can do this without council?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be more transparent than
No.
The city's representatives doing it?
No, that's why I don't want it done that way. That's why I wanted to have this tonight.
Okay, so we are
I want it to be
So we are being transparent. Okay, I misunderstood.
Absolutely.
Okay.
One of my problems is the Pennell County Sheriff, in the past, has held fundraisers at the hitching post and hires off-duty officers for security. So this kind of takes them out of not being impartial and puts a bias towards them. So have we looked at possibly the Maricopa County Sheriff doing it instead of Pennell County? I mean, no matter what we do, one party's gonna be upset. And that's the bottom line. But I don't think that this is a solution to what, what the problem is at the hitching post. The hitching post has a noise problem with their loudspeaker. There's only one person in control of that. And whether, we don't know how long or how many sheriffs are on duty and what is their range. And I do so appreciate you coming tonight and putting yourself out there. And hopefully you can answer some of these questions that I have, but not yet. So, questions that I wrote down was which residents would be affected? Is it, this just the members in the lawsuit? Is it the neighborhood? And what are those boundaries? Or is it anybody that calls to complain about noise at the hitching post? So anybody could call and the sheriff would come out? And because this case is currently under appeal, when would this start? Whenever you get a final word from the judge? I don't know. And how long would it go for? Would it go for two months or four months, or the whole time that the probation was set? Are we gonna go by the county ordinance, the city ordinance, or the state statute on noise? Because it was the state statute that the charges were filed under. And is there gonna be a ticket on the spot? Is it gonna be a citation? Is it gonna be the long form? And then which attorney? Is it gonna be our attorney, the county attorney? What if, in which, which court? If the sheriff is tied up, how long, because I, I assume when dispatch is called and you're out on a car accident or something, you know, you can say, I'm not gonna make it there for an hour or more. Can AJ then go out for the complaint? So these are a lot of the questions that cross my mind, that it sounds simple, but there's a lot of detail that would need to be discussed. And I don't think it should be done administratively. I don't think it should be done at all. Our police haven't done anything wrong. They've responded in a timely manner. As far as I know, there was no complaints against the police. So I, I, I really don't see where this action is even necessary. But I do have a couple of questions for the sheriff, if you don't mind.
So we'll discuss later then, after, after these questions?
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am. Matt Thomas from the sheriff's office. I'm the chief deputy to Sheriff Lam.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Okay, so, because it's all of Pennell County, the, the sheriffs for this area, where are they stationed at?
Our closest station would be Gold Canyon. Essentially, for us, we have roving patrol. So if they're at the station, they're gonna be in Gold Canyon. They could be in Queen Creek, some of them. This is, we have two regions, the northern region covering Queen Creek and Apache Junction, Gold Canyon, Florence Junction area, and our southern region being the rest of the county. So that would be the closest station. However, that particular beat is our Atom Five beat, which means typically our beats have a deputy in them, kind of roaming that beat. If we're short-staffed, that could change. You could have a deputy in Atom Six, which is next door Gold Canyon, responding to this area for those calls.
Okay. And, and noise ordinance or noise nuisance aren't real high priority. That's like a barking dog, or they happen. But if you have a car accident versus a noise complaint, I mean, I
Correct.
Hope you go with a car
This would be, for us, our priorities are, are hot is our top priority, a one below that, a two below that, three, four. This would be a three or a four, depending.
Okay. And that, is that as low as you go?
Pretty much, yeah. And so essentially, what, what you're asking, what would our response time be? It would depend on the call volume at that time, the availability of the deputy, and where he's at, and then the priority of the call. Threes and fours right now, quite frankly, we are not responding to because of COVID. We have eliminated responses to those, and those are phone calls to the RP, asking, what do you have? What's going on? What can we do for you? If they demand a deputy out, then we will respond in those cases. So in this case, it may be a phone call to the complainant, saying, what issue do you have? Now granted, being asked to cover this particular piece, we know that there's, there's issues between the city and the owner of this place going on, and that's why we're being asked to come in. So this would probably not warrant a phone call. This is going to get a physical response, even though priority-wise, it doesn't warrant it right now. But for this particular case, it would.
So on a typical, say, Saturday night, do you have two sheriffs on duty for, because that's a big area from
Right. Yeah, so
All the way to Florence.
So to your, to your question, yeah, we cover the county, so we cover 5,400 square miles. But for this region, you'll have anywhere on, it depends on time of day, obviously, but a Saturday night, you're probably looking at about 15 to 30 officers, depending. And where they're at depends on call volume, too, because we have, the sergeants for our agency have the ability to shift resources. So for example, if we have a deputy in, in this area, and we have a deputy in Gold Canyon, and Santan completely goes to heck, he has the ability to pull those resources out of this area, down to the Santan Valley, Queen Creek area, to deal with those calls. So you may be dealing with a longer response time, and no officers in this area. It just depends on where the calls are.
So is there a way that, because I don't know how you cops all work things. If, if you guys are all tied up, can you let AJ know that you're not gonna be able to respond?
Yes. So in this case
It, it's not fair to any citizen to be left hanging, especially because this is unique circumstances that, I mean, you guys know if you're busy or if you're, don't think you ever twiddle your thumbs, but that's the only thing that crossed my mind.
We try not to.
To let us know that you can't come in a timely manner.
Yeah. And, and I get what you're saying, because you, you have, you are a city, so you, your citizens expect city services and city response times. And they're not gonna get that from a county, they're just not. So typically, what would happen is if, and it happens now, if we don't have a deputy in the area and we need help on a call, we would call AJ and say, hey, we have a call holding. Are you guys available? If they are, they will. If they're not, they won't. And vice versa. The same things happen, happened with them. If they are tied up on a hot call, they call us, and if we have somebody, we send them.
Sure. Okay. And my other question was the county ordinance, and this is something we haven't talked about, which one would actually apply, requires decibel readers? We don't. I don't see how we could require one business or one group of citizens to have to fall under the decibel reader instead of everybody.
They wouldn't, because we can't enforce the county code in your city.
Oh, okay.
So we would be following state statute, which is the nuisance law that, that was, I believe they were cited under before.
Yeah, that was, that was actually used to cite him. Okay. Those are all my questions for the second.
Since Chip brought this up, we're gonna let Chip go, since it's his, kind of his premise here.
Well, first off, I, I want to respond to some of the, you know, the, the things that you had said on it. I brought this up because I, and I am not saying that our police were not, I'll say, responsive and did not do a fair. I am not saying that in any way, shape, or form, or even implying that. I, I really take offense to that part of it.
I didn't say you thought that.
But you said it was implied, that this is what we're doing. I, I have all the favor, I have all the faith in what our police are doing. I was trying to see about the ability to have, I'm gonna say, a third party involved in this, because the city seems to be getting in the middle of this because of the problems on it. I, I really was wanting the ability to really work on, to change our sound ordinance, where we are working underneath something that is scientific, that can be measured.
Definite.
I, right now, and I point to myself on this, when I'm listening to something that is a sound, I have a, I'm gonna say, a dip in my hearing abilities. And I can't hear that. It, it's, you know, it, it can be offensive to someone else. It won't be offensive to me in any way, shape, or form. I, I'd much rather have a way of measuring something. It, it's just like the idea of saying, I witnessed somebody speeding in my neighborhood. I know he was driving 50 miles an hour. Well, unless I had a speed gun out there, I, I'm just guessing.
Yeah.
So putting an actual figure on it. It, it is, you know, a, I'm gonna say, an art of measuring the sound. And from someone that worked in the classification of measuring and, and certain certification of test equipment, I understand that. And once it is done, it is removing the inhuman interpretation of this. And that's one of the things that I wanted to, to work and get into our ordinance, so that we can do that. You were saying how long? Two months, four months, two years? I, I have said over and over again, until we have changed our ordinance, is what I would like to have done. Now, right now, there's not much sound going on out there. If we can get this done inside the next couple of months, we can say thank you for the, the potential service that you would have implemented, and go entirely on ourselves. Yes, there's gonna be some cost involved on it. I, I know initially getting the, and I don't know, how much is one of the sound level meters?
It depends on which model, obviously, but they run two to 500 apiece, and then you have to get recalibration tools and, and, but depending on, again, we're working with a big area, so we need more equipment for AJ. A few of those would suffice, because if you get those calls, you, you would just have that piece of equipment that a sergeant or, usually for us, a sergeant would take it to the scene and measure it and be done.
Yeah. And, you know, and that, that is something I think that we need to, I'll say, work on, and we can work on in, in the next few weeks on it. I, and I, I was trying my best to try to come up with an idea that could be, I'll say, satisfactory with both sides on this, where we're actually doing something that is, I'm gonna say, advantageous to both. And I, that's what I was pushing for, and that's the reason why I came forward with this.
Your Honor.
Yes, Robin, I mean, Mary.
Let's get it done. Let's get that sound ordinance done. Let's do it. If we can call a special meeting, who cares? We can call a special meeting to hack out this sound ordinance and get it done. We won't have to bother Pennell County. It'll be done. That's the best solution, because this is inequitable. It's just inequitable to the rest of the businesses. So let's just get it done. I'm all for it. Get it on the agenda. Let's go.
Yeah, I have some comments. Of course, we all got an organized effort, a writing effort against, towards us and staff, so we all got those letters. So might be responding to some of those as well. First off, I want to stick up for the deputies. The deputies don't have fundraisers there. There's one elected sheriff. The deputies are employees just like our, our officers, and I don't think they would be totally unbiased at all. And if any of us, since we've been in office, have any kind of legal issues or whatever, we, we always go to a third party. I have had in, in my life, and Joel, we have to have, we've had Maricopa County look into things. And in this situation And in this situation, even Judge Coleman recused himself. So, so it's not out of the, out of line to, to have a third party look at this that, that's totally unbiased. So that's, I definitely think that the, the time limit is reasonable. Like Robin and Chip are saying, by the time we get this ordinance, that, that would settle that. And as for will citations be written on the spot, there hasn't been a citation written ever, so. Yeah.
Well, that's why I asked. What are you planning?
The folks that wrote those letters, I mean, I think they need to let us work through this in the open and transparent. They've, they've won. They've, they've won on all thirteen counts. And I don't know what they're fighting against now because nothing has been done since then. I mean, when you're playing in a ballgame and the referee gives you the call, you don't go out and argue too. You've already got the call. Why are you still arguing? So those are just some points that I wanted to make. Anyone else?
I, I had a couple of questions, but I didn't know if Robert. Under what circumstances does the county respond to calls within the city limits currently?
Currently, it would be at the request of the city or if we have an ongoing investigation with, within the city.
And would you, I would think that any agency, they already prioritize their calls, no matter the county, the city. They prioritize their calls. That's what they do. Noise, noise and nuisances are kind of bottom of the totem pole with a barking dog. Accidents are priority. For right now, that was the only questions. Thank you.
Robert? Yeah, I'm kind of, you know, I, I agree with Vice Mayor Wilson as far as, you know, we should have a, someone else take a look at this. But I also agree with Councilman Moeen Barker about let's get this done. So we can, we can compromise in a way where it's like, okay, September thirtieth, if this thing isn't done, enter Penile County. You know, if it's done, then, then great, it's done and, and thank you so much. I think this is something we can, we can get done. I, I got these letters too, or the emails, I should say. Check it very often. But I mean, and from one of the, who is this, Thiesman, a possible solution, outfit Apache Junction Police Department with their own decibel meters that are perfectly capable, police department do, this would be the most effective solution. So we can all agree now on all sides that decibel meters are an essential tool in our noise ordinance. And that happened to be one of the things that have held this ordinance up. As a matter of fact, that was a reason why it was sent back to staff was over the decibel meters. Now that we know that, you know, we're, it's just not us saying, hey, we need decibel meters. It's actually, it's actually the people in the community surrounding the Hitz post are saying we should have decibel meters. So that is an obstacle I think is, is very easy to overcome right now. So we should be able to get this thing done here within, I would say, within a month. We, this thing should be, yeah, done, right. And then it, then it becomes, because right now, he's not bull riding. I mean, it's not, I don't even know if he would if, if the people were here because of what's going on, you know, all things COVID. But, so there shouldn't be any sort of lighting or loudspeakers as far as bull riding goes, even within the next thirty days. So this, this is actually a, a kind of a blessing in disguise for everybody that, so we can get this done and get this taken care of. But I am not opposed to the idea of having a third party coming in and buffering the situation if we fail to agree on a noise ordinance and it goes into August, September, October, November, and we keep cherry picking items. We've, this ordinance has been in front of us twice already. And the first time it's like, okay, let's, I want to find out, where did each item come from, which city? I mean, we could have easily just been like, okay, I agree with it or okay, let's change it. But no, we needed to find out where each one came from. So that bumped it a couple of weeks. And then it's, well, let's find out about these decibel. Now this is bumping a couple of weeks. Let's just get it in front of us. And if we, if we need to redline it one time, that's all we do, one time. We go through the whole thing. This is it. This is what I want to change. This is what I want to change. And then we all agree on any, any sort of solution. And then by the next time, it's done and we just vote on it. So let's not take one item and say, let's address this, bring it back to staff. And then when it comes back, pick another item out and say, okay, let's address this, send it back to staff. Let's just get it done the first time around. And, you know, I agree with Councilmember Robert, we can get this thing done. We could throw a special meeting and I would strongly suggest don't put on the same special meeting as a care act. Let's have its own. That's it. That's the only thing on there, one item. And let's just knock it out.
Councilmember Struble, you haven't weighed in. Do you want to?
No, I, I pretty much agree that, that we need to, we need to move forward. I, I totally trust our police officers as to how they are operating without any bias. An ordinance is like any other ordinance that we have within the city. It, it's, it's and I, and I agree. Robert. But, but government, we got to be really careful about going too fast also. But, but we can move this thing through. We can give staff direct, direction to move forward. I don't have a problem with meeting anymore or in, in addition to what we're already doing. This issue is just getting too, too cumbersome, too blown way out, way out. And we got to come to a conclusion, not that there's not going to be other things happen, but let's get her done as, as a great Nebraska philosopher.
I, I want to just basically in, you know, kind of show, make some of the comments concerning, not comments, but statements concerning a, a decibel level. A decibel level is, is a unit of measurement. It is arbitrary number that has been applied to a certain amount of sound. And it's a way of measuring it. Another example is, okay, you're driving at sixty miles an hour. Well, that's approximately a hundred kilometers an hour as well. It's an arbitrary number out there. And I got a couple of things. A normal conversation approximately three foot away is approximately sixty dB. It can be anywhere from sixty to seventy dB depending on the, the person's volume at the time and how serious of a conversation that he was in. A flushing toilet runs anywhere from seventy-five to eighty-five dB. So it kind of gives you a roughly idea of what that is. It, it is, it is a noise level on it. At a library in which is supposedly being totally silent, it can run anywhere from forty to forty-five dB. So those are, kind of gives you a rough idea of what it is on it. Which I used to work around jet engines. That's better than a hundred and twenty dB, which is extremely noisy. And I'm not saying that we use those things. I'm just trying to throw those numbers out so you can kind of give you a basis of what noise is. I was going to ask a question on your meter. I'm assuming it's a type two meter?
Our, our ordinance requires a type two and it has to be ANSI certified. They're a blessing.
And, and when you're making your measurements, you do it on a slow or do that?
Slow, yes.
Slow, okay. And, and what that is, is time wise, how the sound is taken in. It is over a period of time. And that gives you basically, in a sense, a window or a showing of the sound level in that period of time. And it, it helps everybody out so that you can see and you can understand the noise that you're seeing and the noise that you're hearing. And I, I really and truthfully think that this is the best way we can go. And I would love the idea of having this all said and done and not have to have you all coming out. I sure appreciate you.
We're not looking for extra work.
I appreciate you actually accepting the, I'll say, the challenge of coming into our community and helping us out in this. It is something that I, I felt that bringing in someone from the outside that was totally neutral this way, we're not saying that the city is going after and not paying attention to the residents and vice versa. We're not saying that the, the residents are always right in the case.
No, we, you know, as an agency, and I know AJ's the same, we conflict stuff out all the time. If there's a conflict of interest for us, we may ask Apache Junction to do like a, a professional standards investigation for us. So it's the same thing. You're conflicting out because you have something going on that you don't want the city to be involved in. And we become the neutral party, which is fine for us because it's our county. I, I do doubt very highly that Sheriff Penzone is going to come into our county because our sheriff is going to object to that.
No, I, I don't think so either.
And that would just increase response time again.
Though we do have Sheriff Joe's signs inside the city limits. I guess they don't know where the county.
They're in Queen Creek too, I know.
Krista?
So I don't think, when we talk about the perception and whether or not anybody has an issue or the council has an issue with thinking that our, our city police department has done anything wrong, that's not the issue. It's not that anybody up here thinks that our city police have done anything wrong. It's the perception from the community. And that's where having the third party comes in. It's not, they're, you know, they're all neutral. You know, we believe that they're all neutral. Regardless of the agency, it's just the perception to the community. It just gives them the perception that there isn't that bias. None of us up here think there's any bias going on.
Real quick to the Vice Mayor's point for your ordinance, because I know you're going to consider it. All of that language is in our ordinance. The type that we have to use, what it measures, how it measures, lines it all out because we have had plenty of cases in the past with several different locations in our county where we've had to deal with noise complaints. And that, that's where this was all born. We had to get these noise meters back when those started, figure it all out. So we stumbled our way through it and there's people way smarter than me that figured out all the decimals and the slow and the type two. So the framework is there. It should be easy enough to just look at the different frameworks from different jurisdictions and pick what fits and go.
I think one thing that's going to be important is figuring out where the reading is taken. Are you going to take it from inside the complainant's home?
That's line.
Are you going to take it from inside the bar, outside the bar, outside the complainant's front yard? I mean, that's going to be a factor that we need to consider as well.
And have you had any casework yet where you've used the decibel readers and it's actually gone to court?
We've had a couple of cases down in Queen Creek. If you're familiar with the moto park that's on Ironwood, that is a place, that's a point of contention with residents from the Mesa side. They're actually in Maricopa County, but they complain about the noise. So we've had a lot of dealings with them on the, the noise stuff. And so there is essentially judicial recognition of the devices, how they have to be used, how they have to be certified and how we have to use them. And then we follow the ordinance for a lot of that stuff. It outlines where you measure from, the distance, what the decimals have to be at that distance to be a violation.
So the, the decibel readers themselves have, in court cases, have proved you correct?
Correct. And, and we, you can't, because I can't arbitrarily show up somewhere and say, it's unreasonable for me because what's unreasonable for me may be reasonable for you. So this gives us, this gives us a clear cut definition of what the ordinance defines as reasonable and unreasonable. The times, the distance, the decimals.
Okay, so where are we with our scheduling the, our discussion?
Well, if you recall, you did do a direction to staff to bring back a, an ordinance that combines all of these sections that the city has already on noise. So that meeting was going, well, probably was going to be on August third. So what I'm hearing is you don't want to do that. You want to come back sooner. And you want to actually have a noise ordinance with decibel readings in it, similar to Penile County. That's what I'm hearing.
August third is two meetings from now. That's not a distant long time. I mean.
No, and you asked me to do some research also, which we started that. The, the actual ordinance combining the noise sections, that's about ninety-five percent done. That's almost done. I have to also do the resolution and the ordinance that goes with it. That's only two or three pages. But I have the actual substance of the combination. So I don't know if you still want to do that or you want to just create a noise ordinance that applies to all those things that are already listed in the code. I think that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Well, for one thing, could we put in like the framework he was mentioning about the type, what we need?
That would come from the Penile County code, I believe.
Right, well, that's where I pulled the noise, the decibel readings from in the first place. I just didn't get into detail about what type and things like that, but could we add that in there? So it's.
What be the specifications of the actual unit?
What the device has to meet with standard. Right, right, right.
And I'm not sure if it just said the ONZI. I, I don't remember what it says, but we could check that. We'll definitely check that.
Well, that, that, that to me is important, include what type of meter it, because you can do, you can get several different types. You can spend, you can get a noise or, I mean, a noise meter that you can spend three to five thousand dollars on. But only thing is that is a very, that was mainly is used in facilities that perform calibrations of noise meters. So I don't want, want anything like that.
They have to be cop proof.
Yes, that, that'd be cumbersome to carry around and be extremely expensive. And you have to maintain a certain temperature so you couldn't go out in the evening when it's a hundred and twenty degrees.
Well, the specs are in here, I believe. Now, if you want Sedonas, this is only six pages long. Sedonas is fifteen pages long. And there's all sorts of green type of environmental issues in there. I, I assume you don't want that.
Sedona is different because they have vortexes up there and that affects sound.
So if we put in the actual brand or meter and type, if they go out or just like Motorola, we're not going to have support. Do we have to redo that section of it?
We could have some language that I think covers that or, or a, a suitable substitute based on staff recommendation. Sure. You won't have to redo the ordinance because that's what you don't want to do. You don't want to redo the ordinance once you did it once.
There's not a single manufacturer. There's multiple manufacturers for the same device.
I, I'll, I'll respond to her statement on that is there's several different manufacturers that make them. The type is a, I'm going to say, is designed in the, I'll say, measurement of sound. They have a type two, they have a type three and a type one. Type three is very, I'll say, loose tolerances. It's not used very much in it. It would be something that maybe I would use on my, my phone or something like this. A type two is more of a portable unit that is being used in the field and it can be done. So there's many different types to, excuse me, different manufacturers for type twos across board. So if we just say type two, we got that locked in. Doesn't have to be a Motorola. It doesn't have to be a Samsung. It doesn't have to be anything. It's just that type. And a type one is, we don't want. Because they're extremely expensive and again, they are used in the calibration facilities to calibrate a type two gauge.
So is that the, is that what the county has in there is whatever, it's type two or whatever that's.
Yes, it, it gives the technical spec, specifications, but not a brand name or anything.
What we don't put in any of our ordinances is, hopefully we don't have any in there. So is that something that we can, we can go and just basically, as, as what Robert, Councilmember Schroeder has, has done the legwork of getting a lot of the information in there. But we can go by what the county already has, what maybe some other like cities of ours that, that like comparable cities that, that to us that might already have some things and come back with a suggested ordinance with all those facts and, or with all those details by August third?
I will do that. I'll, I'll, if you want to come back for a special meeting tomorrow night, I'll do it.
No.
That's what you want. I'll work all day, all night to get it done.
Eleven PM.
Okay.
They already have a meeting tomorrow night. You'll have to get Wednesday.
Joel, can we have it where the new stuff is color coded versus what our normal is? So we can see what is, what is different or looking to change?
Or is this going to be a whole brand new ordinance? I'm just trying to understand what we're asking staff to do.
I think what I'm hearing is you want, you still want to see wherever we mention noise, you want to see that and you want to see where it is in the code, correct? Okay. And then you want to see a decibel application to that type of noise or the types of noise that are listed like animal. that are listed, like animals, vehicles, music, construction. Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking about, the things that are already in the code I just mentioned. CUP is also in there. It gets a little tricky with P and Z, but you're gonna apply decibel measurements to those types of noise. That's, that's up to the council. So, you want that brought back by the 3rd, or do you want to have a different time period for that?
So, if I may.
You are.
So, if, anything that we're throwing at you right now, the color coded thing, put in the, you know, the specs of the meter, throw that on there and then bring it to us, and then at that point in time, we'll have this, and we'll go over any verbiage that may be confusing or may need to be explained. If there's something that's not, that we thought, we all should still have it, right? I mean, I know it's been a while since the original one came out, but if.
It's online, yeah.
If we can, if we can get, get it to the point where we're, it's fresh in our minds right now and what we had over the past two times kind of brought it back to staff for, have it at that point, and then we can just go through it. And then by the time we're done with it, that night, that's it. And then, okay, it's gonna be sent back because of any redline, of course. And then when the next one comes back two weeks later, whenever, it should be ready to be voted on, because we are going to go through it item by item. We're gonna say, well, you know, what is this word supposed to mean? Or what is that word supposed to mean? And then, and that's when we start fixing it, because unless we have it in front of us right now going through it, I mean, there's just so many different things we could probably, you know, bring up to change. But if we just take.
Possible to, at the next city council, regular scheduled city council meeting, that'd be one of the subjects to discuss, or, excuse me, city council, but in a work session.
July 20th would be your next work session.
Well, the next.
We've already got it scheduled, probably.
That's only, I mean, that's not a lot of time, but.
From your last direction to staff, Councilmember Struble's correct, that the August 3rd was the planned date to bring that, bringing all the different parts of the code into one place for you to see them. So, we could do that since that's our direction to staff, but if you wanted to see something, the next work session, we could try to put something.
The idea of just starting it, getting involved in it, if it could have something, instead of something that could be presented at that time.
At which time?
The next city council, or work session, excuse me, not city council.
To bring forward what we have completed, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Can we let this poor sheriff go home?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, yes.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, thank you for coming.
We're in our own little world.
I have one, but thank you.
So, we have times and we have a plan going forward?
So, we just need to know if you want to see it sooner. Joel's saying it's not that much time for the Monday, July 20th meeting.
Let's put the August 3rd.
We already have August 3rd slated.
Let's do August 3rd and just, if you could, put in anything that was suggested tonight, so that way, anything that we've discussed tonight, and we've already, the last two times we've already discussed, that should all be kind of compounded into it already.
August 3rd.
Joel, can this have that emergency clause with it? Or does it have to go through that 90-day timeframe?
There's no fees. There would be fines, like every other city has with them, but no, you don't need that extra 60 days because they're not business fees, so you do not need that. Now, well, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I don't want to get too complicated. It's already 9:15.
August 3rd.
All right. We will be adjourned, and we'll see everybody tomorrow.